Attention, attention.
Okay. Let's call the meeting to order. September study session. Let the record show that all members are present tonight. Great deal. And if you would, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the business of liberty, justice, and for all.
I would now entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Summons.
Motion by Lena. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Charles.
Oh shoot. I'm putting in that last thing you told me to do. I can't keep up with all your... He's giving me three orders in the last 10 minutes. I can't keep up.
I've noticed.
Okay. Sorry. I said no, by the way.
We all sitting in? Everybody in?
My answer is no.
This is a controversial vote. Are we in? Has everybody voted?
Yeah. But I voted no. Did you get that?
Okay. We'll put that there.
Oh, it's asking us again.
I voted no.
Yep.
Does it vote again?
It's gone now.
I'm so passionate about this agenda.
You're not kidding.
Messed the whole thing up. Voter fraud. Sponsored by you.
We did controversial items and never thought approval of the agenda would be a problem.
There it goes.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Ah, it's just slow. Technology's slow tonight. Okay. Item 2.01. Ms. Luton, do we have any public comments on the agenda items? Not? Okay. Moving on. Item 3.01. The Springfield Council of PTA report. Becky Bowles, you're up.
That's you. Yay.
And thank you for being here.
And thank you for advising. Kathy's doing that. I just want to say good evening, and I'm Becky Bowles, as first year president of the Springfield Council of PTAs. And I'm proud to be representing now our 104-year-old organization. And we oversee 40 to 50 Springfield PTA and PTSA units, and we have 4,347 members. I'm surprised at that. So, we are all members of the Missouri PTA and the National PTA, which is over 4 million people. We use our voice to advocate for public education for children and families in our local school district, as well as on the state legislative level. I want to thank you for partnering with PTA. Our success comes from collaborative efforts with and support from our teachers, principals, and district administration. I'm a team sports fan, so I really appreciate teamwork, and thank you for teaming with PTA. My goal this year as the first time president is to cultivate relationships between our schools' PTA units throughout our very diverse district. I want to create opportunities for the highly successful units to mentor some of our struggling units. PTAs look different in every school. We have some amazing and creative parents, and then some other parents who are really eager to learn. Okay, let me see where else... Where do I click, Kathy?
Just click and they click.
Click. Okay. I want to go over some of the programs and areas that we service. The Clothing Bank, we've had since 1973, and our responsibility, it's our biggest and our most active program. We opened this year on August 3, and since August 3, we have serviced 497 students. That breaks it down to about 100 kids every day that we are in service in about two and a half hours. 100 kids in two and a half hours. And last year, we recorded approximately 2,000 students distributing 8,000 tops, 4,700 bottoms, 1,787 coats and jackets. And when students arrive at the Clothing Bank and they're not in our system, we don't turn them away. Last year, we had over 400 kids show up that we could not find in the computer as a student somewhere for some reason, but we went ahead and serviced them. So that brought our total of serving about 2,500 kids. Let me see what's next. There we go. That's all the things I just said. All right. So, except for, we spent about $12,817 on news locks and underwear. That's 6,400 pairs of undies and 6,400 pairs of socks. Last year, we were able to get a business account with Hanes, which has allowed us to get more items for the funds that we spend. We were also open during summer school for the first year, which has increased our numbers of kids that we have served. The program is really working, and we are grateful for the space at Studi and for the support from SPS, because we couldn't do everything we're doing without all the things that you provide for us there as well. So if you would like to visit the Clothing Bank, I'll be happy to set you up for a visit. I would also like to add that the Quanis works out of the Clothing Bank, same hours that we are there. And last year, they distributed about 1,000 pairs of shoes. Okay, Reflections is another very active program in our council, and I just have to give you these stats. It was two years ago, the National PTA reported nearly 300,000 students in over 8,000 schools across the country that submitted their original works to be considered for PTA's highest honor in the arts. And a panel of experts reviewed more than 1,000 national round submissions. National PTA chose 206 of the most creative works from that school year. Well, four of those 206 were from our Springfield Council of PTAs. Two were from Kickapoo, one from Greenwood, and one from Roundtree. And I keep these numbers handy because my granddaughter was one of those four. So, I will always be proud of Reflections. All right. We have some other programs that we also support. We donate to Project Graduation. We support RIF, who is projected to distribute about 10,000 books to first and second graders this year. We support Don't Meth With Us, the Missouri PTA Scholarship Program and the Council Scholarships, which we provide to graduating senior from each high school. And we also manage the scholarships for the schools that apply for the Gertrude McBride and the Charles Nichols Care Funds. And those are both designed to help students in need and award them for their academic achievements, and these awards are given at the discretion of the principals. We also provide membership and attendance awards to our qualifying units, so we're always giving something away. All right, let me see what my next one's up. Fourth grade play. We have about 2,000 kids that are going to be visiting the Springfield Little Theater in December to see J.L. F., Jr. We do that every year. It's quite a tradition. All right. Oh, there he is. We also host the Founder's Day Banquet, which is a tradition nationwide for PTA, every February to recognize our hardworking volunteers and our PTA units. And I appreciate all of you who have participated in this banquet. It is a highlight of your support for our council. And let's see. October is National Principals Month. This year, we are honoring our principals with a mayor's proclamation. You're welcome to join us October 4 at Jeffrey School at 9:15. We have some other units in our council here that host the All-Pro Dads and the Dads of Great Students. It's called Watch Dogs. These are National PTA programs meant to engage parents in the school with an emphasis on bringing dads into the buildings. It's going very well in a few of our schools, and we're encouraging more to get involved. We also provide work... Oh, there's safety. Okay, we do workshops where we train our officers with our officer orientation and our school of information, and encourage them to attend a PTA convention in the spring. We also chair the School Crossing Protection Committee that meets at the Traffic Management Center quarterly. We work with traffic management staff, school police, county officers, and the School Crossing Guard Company on sidewalk and traffic safety. PTA units, parents were asked to survey the walking path to each of the schools and report any damage to any of the sidewalks to this committee. Okay, our parliamentarian and legislative chairperson, Donna Pettiford, which you may know, she's a former Missouri PTA president. She keeps us informed on Jeff City's educational alerts, as well as national issues related to public education. She will be leading our November meeting at Bowerman, which is going to be a town hall with some of our elected officials. And you're certainly welcome to attend, and I'm sure you're aware of the current campaign of stop cuts to classrooms. Major Saber is our annual fundraiser and where we bring in over $20,000 to our operating budget for the last few years. And our campaign will start for the PTA council next spring, and I'll let you know, because I'm sure you'll want to get some class. Okay. Our local PTA and PTSA units provide many programs, activities, schools, supplies, equipment, and support to their respective schools. It would take too long to recognize them all, but we're extremely proud of them all. And our council board officers this year represent about 150 years of service in PTA units in this district. As president this year, I'm really blessed with a team of amazing, talented, experienced, and passionate officers and chairpersons. And I'd like to acknowledge our council advisory committee, which includes principals Stephanie Young, Jennifer Webb, Joe Cooper, Kirk Slater, Jason Michael, our immediate past president, Carrie Wines, our Missouri PTA representative, Tori Salee, and our superintendent representative, Brett Range, and our Board of Education advisor, Jerry Lee. I want to thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Questions for Becky?
Any questions? Yes.
On the date that you say in November, which you have some legislators attending the format Bowerman?
Yes.
What's the date? Do you have a date?
On the back page of what you have there, it's November the 1st.
Thank you.
Anything else? And I just clicked. It's all black now. Is that my good? Carol, fix it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Okay, moving on to item 3.02, bond issue survey results. And I'm going to introduce Carol here in just a second to introduce that presentation. I guess I just want to make a few comments before we get into that, because you're going to hear a whole lot of data tonight, a whole lot of information, good information, some feedback that we're getting. But I just want to kind of posture tonight as really it's a matter of understanding what it's telling us and clarifying if we got questions that we really understand, because it's going to be really easy for us to jump into the so what and what's next. And that's not what we want to do tonight. Tonight is just hear the data, digest the data, because it's coming back. We're going to use it in some of our strategic planning process, and some of that information and administration, we'll be using that for, as we talk about next step. So I just wanted to make sure and kind of set that premise tonight, that we really want to make sure we all understand what we have in front of us, and if something doesn't make sense, you don't understand it, just clear it up and make sure we do. So with that premise, Ms. Embry, I'll let you introduce our speaker.
Thank you very much. I'll go ahead and invite Mr. Mark Maynes to join me at the podium. So this is a familiar face for many people. Mark wrapped up 30 years in public education, supporting the work that we do. In 2013, and he spent 18 of those years right here in Springfield Public Schools. So beyond that, though, he went on to start a business where he focuses on human-centered design and also strategic plan work, and works with a wide variety of entities throughout the states. And he's partnered with Opinion Research Specialists in Springfield, and also with Subculture LLC in Cambridge, Massachusetts. So Mark's here this evening to share that data with us. We love you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Breaking news, these things are very complex, right? That is what I found, but I knew that from 18 years of experience here, and where we ran a number of bonds and levies. And these things are very difficult, and there are a lot of factors that come into play. I worked with Dr. Mark Elixen on this project, and from Opinion Research Specialists, he's got a great track record here, not only with Springfield Public Schools, but around the city and state of doing some good data collection on the quantitative end of things. And often what we do when we partner is to ensure we get as much information as possible. We do a combination of the quantitative and qualitative approach. And I use the human-centered design first in the field to ascertain information, to help really design the surveys as well as give us that additional information we need that I think really helps us understand the voters. So for this particular report, we did, we used four methods. We did online survey for staff, and then we did a random survey of voters who took part in the April 2017 election. I started with the human-centered design approach, with staff and voters, two separate designs, and then focus groups. And actually, we have a few focus groups that we're going to do to follow up the report as well, to gather some additional information. So I'd like to start with kind of the big takeaways that we heard from the voters. And this particular, these 12 items are a combination of setting down and listening to voters, as well as then analysis we receive from a quantitative data collection. And I know that you're familiar with the human-centered design approach, because that's utilized here in the district, I believe. But the power behind the design and the reason some of these are embedded in these top 12 themes is where you sit at the kitchen table essentially of the voter, sometimes at Panera, but often at their home, at the kitchen table, wherever they like to meet. Same thing with the teachers, staff. And what I had them do is walk me through their entire process, where they first heard about this issue, all the information, their thought process, the reaction to the information they received, up until the time they walked into the ballot box. Okay? So that's how we handled the design approach. We did those two designs for staff and voters, and then we followed with the surveys I mentioned. So having been a veteran of these things, it was really fascinating to me some takeaway from the design process, also from the surveys, but certainly from the design process as well. The size and cost of issue, obviously, something that we heard both from the survey. I heard more in the design interview side, the complexity of the issue, trying to figure out what was going to happen, making sure they had the facts and things of that nature. Those are major components of how it impacted voters in terms of the information. One thing that I'll share with you early on, and you know, mention the complexity of the issue on number three as well, that really struck me with highly engaged voters, and especially with voters that were by default supportive of the school district and historically with votes, is they really struggled with this vote. They gathered their information pretty early on, not much of an impact from the campaign materials, those sorts of things, but they struggled with this because they heard a lot of information about the community schools, the impact that it was going to have, and those things of that nature. So a lot of, a number of those individuals I talked to ended up voting yes, but sometimes it was up until the time they walked into that ballot box that they were trying to make their decision. Some that had always voted yes voted no for a variety of reasons. But that's an important component, especially in a city and a vote that requires every yes vote that you can manage, right? So there was some hesitation there with normally very supportive voters, and most attributable to the complexity of it and some concerns they were hearing from those individuals closest to those schools. Had a huge impact, more so than any of the social media or traditional media sources that were in existence. Another thing, you'll see on the actual survey, the preference to renovate buildings is strong in this community. It remains strong, even so with the staff. That's what I call the default, is to renovate before they hear much of anything else. Another thing that really I noticed with the design, something I picked up on is there was not a sense of urgency with the voters. I noticed it especially when they didn't ask me much about, well, when do you think they're going to run it again, or this is really needed, or those sorts of things. So one thing that campaigns have to have is that sense of urgency, that we really need to have this now, or it's going to be a problem. We need to fix these problems. I did not sense that with the design phase of this with the voters, and that really struck me in the discussions I had with them. And then, obviously, this is a time where credibility with institutions are low. We all know the data coming through with that, so the grassroots impact of discussions with people that were closest to the sources were very, very influential, especially with the highly engaged voters that tend to gather information early on in their decision-making and look for those sources of information. So ultimately, I'm not dismissive of any of your campaign team. All that has to happen, right? You have to have, there's going to be last minute voters, so you're going to have to have direct mail. You're going to have to have those things that you know impact. I'm not being dismissive of those at all, but a lot of decisions with your highly engaged voters were made early on, and there's little or no impact when those other resources came through. So on the staff side, obviously, you've gone through a lot of change in the last few years, a lot of new direction. Some of that has impacted what, to a certain extent, some of the voters, but with the staff sharing with me. That's why I asked the question, you'll see later on, the direction of the school district I put in the survey question. I think it held up pretty well, but that's a small influence of what's taking place. Change is difficult in a non-changing environment, right? So you add all that up, and then you throw this on, and there is a little bit of anxiety around that. I mentioned the engaged voters collecting essential information early on. We also learned from the surveys and from discussions, and we know from history that specificity is needed, and that's probably something that should be considered in future projects. The more detail you can give, the more definitive answers you can provide, better off you're going to be on support. Based on the survey information, we did not have a lot of new voters, although the voter turnout was high. These voters shared with us, if they remembered correctly, that they had voted in a prior SPS election. Maybe that's worth exploring a little bit more, but there didn't, based on the voter screen we did, were asked what they had voted prior, there was not a lot of new voters. If you get a chance on the report to look at the demographic breakdown, I studied it. I did not see a huge impact from the mayor election in terms of the type of voter that showed up. We asked them what their primary reason to vote for. 9% indicated they were there primarily to vote for the mayor in the mayor's election. And when you write down the cross tabs on that, actually, they tended to show more support in the areas, or indicated more support in the areas that we asked around. So we didn't see evidence of a whole lot of impact on the mayor election. The last two items on this, the big key themes, were from the demographics that we took a look at, and the staff. What we noticed to be substantive, the staff from 18 to 45 age range, they registered higher percentages of support. When we asked them what areas pushed them to be more supportive, they tended to be more supportive across the board. Obviously, so did parents of SPS students. So a couple of core groups there were more supportive in the key themes. So we'll take a look at the two different surveys, and I'm not going to go through every detail of this, but we'll take a look at the big picture of what we learned from the survey. And this was conducted by Opinion Research Specialist and Dr. Elixen. So the first question we asked out of the box, and this is important to understand that we asked, we asked the individual taking the survey, why do you think people supported or opposed the initiative? And this is from the voter survey. And the top reason, not a shock, was opposed to tax increases, their taxes are already too high. Okay? So that was the number one, open-ended, top of mind question, answer they gave to that question. Second was poor communication, in other words, learning about the issue. SPS not good towards taxpayer money. I will tell you that that, in my 18 years here, you know, that's going to be there to a certain percentage, right? So that's not, that did not surprise me. That's part of the mix where you have a no vote. Usually comes in around 30, 33% of a no vote, no matter what you do anyway, right? So you've got to keep that in perspective. Asked for too much money at one time, and then opposed for school-related reasons, meaning buildings, community schools, changes in that area. Lack of trust in SPS administration, these are all down in the single digits. Proposal was too ambiguous. We talked about that. A lot of people thought it was apathy or ignorance. Most said they did not have children, and SPS was another reason, and miscellaneous. So those were the opposition reasons. Reasons for support. Now, these are voters saying, I think this is the reason people support it. So most of them believe if you support it, you have children in SPS. They always support education or SPS issues. The perceived need ranked at 21.7. Uninformed, meaning people didn't know enough, so they voted yes. It's a cynical thing. It's, that was reported out. Important for Springfield's future, some of the positive things there, live on the South Side, trust SPS administration, school and board, and then just miscellaneous answers.
May I ask you just a quick question?
Yes.
This is just a question about the way you posed the question, not about the data. Why is the question, why do you think people did that, rather than why did you do that?
Dr. Elixen, his approach is not to ask voters how they voted on...
Because it's too personal, or...
Yes.
Thinking we're going to get the same information, we just ask it a different way?
To a certain extent, yes. Now, when I did the human-centered design, I asked them diplomatically, or asked if they would mind sharing what they did. That's the approach he uses. The second screen you'll see is about, we posed these categories and asked them if they, these would lend themselves to be more supportive because of these categories, or be supportive. So this is more personal information coming up.
Okay.
So we asked them of these categories, of these issues, which one would cause you to be more supportive? Then here's the answers to that. So they would be more supportive personally if it was about renovation of older schools. That's the top issue. Right behind that, replacing older schools with newly constructed schools. Okay? So I know that's a difficult thing, but that goes to that understanding an issue, I think, and having a good grasp of what you're trying to achieve. I think it leaves the door open for you to do some future things. Level of trust, that's a positive 44%, so that was the third rank. And you just flip these if you, well, the opposition's not perfectly flipped, but you can see the difference there. Level of detail provided, this is where it slips, you know, below the 50% mark on it. Locating elementary and middle schools in one campus, explanation of new building, supporting student learning. That one I heard during the design phase as well. Well, how's this working in terms of impacting student learning? We need to know that. We need to know that information. Closings or consolidating certain schools and the amount of tax needed. The highest negative opposed was closing or consolidating certain schools, and then the tax. That gives you a little more insight into the personal views around that. So one thing that... So, this is more personal information coming up, okay? So, we asked them of these categories, of these issues, which one would cause you to be more supportive? Then, here's the answers to that. So, they would be more supportive personally if it was about renovation of older schools. That's the top issue. Right behind that, replacing older schools with newly constructed schools, okay? So, I know that's a difficult thing, but that goes to that understanding of the issue, I think, and having a good grasp of what you're trying to achieve. I think it leaves the door open for you to do some future things. Level of trust, that's a positive 44%, so that was the third rank. And you just flip these if you, well, the opposition's not perfectly flipped, but you can see the difference there. Level of detail provided, this is where it slips below the 50% mark on it. Locating elementary and middle schools in one campus, explanation of new building, supporting student learning. That one I heard during the design phase as well. Well, how's this working in terms of impacting student learning? We need to know that. We need to know that information. Closings or consolidating certain schools and the amount of tax needed. The highest negative opposed was closing or consolidating certain schools, and then the tax. That gives you a little more insight into the personal views around that. So, one thing that was asked of us to include in the survey for future reference was these areas around what would be positive influence for future support. Knowing exact location of schools, fewer projects implemented in multiple phases, school choice programs, part of facility upgrades. This is the voter survey once again, and it's interesting to see the school choice part of that being positive. Architectural drawings of the new schools available. So, in a sense, more specificity there gives you some direction for the future. So, this is the sources of impact and support. So, are you more likely to support if you heard information from these sources? The number-one source, teachers or other SPS employees, that hasn't changed in a long time, okay? That's consistent. That speaks to that grassroots nature I spoke to earlier about making sure that you had the connections to those authentic voices close to the neighborhoods. Family or friends, usually somebody that is in the school or connected to the school. Community presentations, they like those. You'll see that there's a high number did not view those, obviously, because a lot of people aren't going to see those. That's the far-right column. Facility master plan, once again, the more authentic, detailed information people have, the more positive they are around it. And then it goes down from there. Radio and TV advertising, direct mail pieces, both social media and traditional media sources at the bottom of that page. Any questions around information sources?
I guess, I don't, you asked that question, and so for each one of them, they answered, I supported it because of teachers, or I opposed it, or it had no impact on my vote.
Right. So, we asked them, we gave them the source and said, would you be more likely to support based on information from these sources?
So, if they said it had no impact, we've got no idea what did have an impact.
Well, that just means that source has little or no impact.
We just knew that one didn't have an impact.
This is really, falls along the, this is not a shocking piece of information in terms of where people put the most emphasis on their credibility. So, we'll move to the staff survey. They also projected the reasons for opposition, just like the voters. So, we replicated the majority of the survey with the staff as well. School-related issues, means consolidation, school closings, those sorts of things. Once again, that was ranked very high with the staff. Ask for too much money at one time, communication, and SPS not good stewards of taxpayer money. Those are staff projecting reasons.
This is what staff thought with other people.
Correct.
Not themselves.
Not themselves, no. And then, second page, we'll pick up the opposed to tax increases, lack of trust, uninformed, similar, some similar issues with the voters. Reasons for support, I'll just go through that. Reasons for support, had children in school, perceived need, want improvements, support education in SPS, equity among the district, and something for everyone, important for Springs Village future. Traditional answers, I would say. Nothing shocking on these as well.
Mark, were they, did they pick one answer, or did they pick just which ones?
These are the, this was the open-ended.
Open-ended.
So, more times than not, they'll just give one answer. Mark listens, his callers listen and write down multiple answers, and then they categorize.
Okay.
And these are the factors that the staff mentioned influenced them in terms of supportings that we provided them, they reacted to. So, renovation of older schools, once again, as I mentioned early on, that default renovation of older schools is very powerful. Replacing older schools, similar with the voters, that ranked high as well. Explanation of building, supporting student learning, that obviously is a little higher with support for staff. This is the one that I wanted to check, the overall direction of the school district, still higher percentage supported because they were happy with the overall district direction. Detail about bond issue proposal being provided, trust in SPS school board administration, elementary and middle schools on one campus, closing or consolidating certain schools, and amount of tax needed to fund Phase One. So, you see a lot of similarities with the voters in the top main driving issues there. The future support, a little higher number on knowing exact locations, that makes sense if you're a staff member, because we're going to be working in that sort of thing. Architectural drawings, once again, this indicates some of the top three, especially the more specificity. School choice didn't register as high as a reason for support as it did with the voters. Source of information, this is the staff version of as close to the sources you can get. Site principal, the number-one level of support comes from that. Facility master plan report, community presentations, fellow SPS employees, superintendent's video, the district put together a video, I think on the outset of this initiative that explained everything. Social media, radio and TV, once again, you can start to see where those traditional social media and campaign materials had the least impact on them. Once again, as a caveat, that does not mean you don't do those things, it's just, in this case, they didn't have a huge impact on them. So, once again, going back to the beginning of the complexity of these issues, when, you know, obviously, I have a unique perspective because I've been here before and seen this happen, and it's that mix that you have, and it's a difficult mix of how much do you ask for, how much do you do, the methods you use to communicate them. It's a very difficult thing that you can't, you know, one piece of that being out of place makes it difficult to be successful. So, the big issues, the big takeaways, the size of the issue and cost. Cost is always going to be a major issue with voters. The size of the issue, wrapping their heads around what was going to happen, not knowing all the answers, the complexity really impacted, I would say, your highly engaged voters more than past elections. As you know, preference to renovate, you see, is very strong. I would say the sense of urgency, something that really played a part in this, and then very strong evidence about, going back to those authentic grassroots voices are going to have the most impact on your voters. Any questions?
Questions for Mark.
You've mentioned most of these things were fairly, to me, was there anything that you didn't identify with anyone? An eyebrow or a certain eye did not indicate?
I think, I would say the sense of urgency issue was the one, and listening to very supportive voters, how they struggled with this, whereas in the past, they would say, yes, you know, I'm doing this. That doesn't mean, they voted no in the end, but they struggled. And they were getting information from those community source areas that gave them pause.
Following up with that sense of urgency, was that a sense of urgency that they didn't feel the sense of urgency, or the perception was, we didn't have a sense of urgency?
They didn't feel that it was an urgent matter to address from their standpoint, and yes. Like, if I don't vote for this, the schools are really going to struggle. You've got to get to that point with a certain percentage of voters for them to be motivated.
I can't remember. I know we've seen drafts of the survey, so I don't know all the demographic questions that you asked before, whether in a focus group, or whether in the 400 surveys or whatever. But was there any questions related to whether or not these individuals participated or attended in any of the facility master planning meetings or surveys? Because the information we received from all of that, some of it is a little bit different from what they're saying.
Sure.
So, I was just curious if, I don't know if my question's making sense, but if they participated in that, or if they didn't even know the facility master plan existed, you know?
Right. The only indication we even have of that is this question for voters, where we asked them the information sources, and if they said did not receive or no impact. That would be the only way we could say whether they, you know, had any information around that. And I, that's difficult to believe, you know, it's difficult to know the exact number on that. Some may feel like, oh, I saw something, but they didn't attend a meeting, you see what I mean? Or I saw a report on a meeting. That would be a little difficult to ascertain, but to answer your question directly, no, we did not ask specifically if you, you know, we don't know the percentage of people that attended or took part in this. And I understand, yeah, it's difficult when you're in the planning phase, you're asking for public input. I think it's smart to always, like you did in this process, to always do those random surveys as well, because sometimes certain people show up to these meetings and don't, you know? So, I think those steps were taken, though. I think you had surveys ahead of time.
Couple, I think, I think I'm understanding, you determined the big takeaways based on the combination of Ellison's data and your human-centered design, based on that combination. So, those big takeaways are your interpretation doing both of them because he wasn't involved in the human-centered.
No, Dr. Ellison wasn't.
Yeah.
We did the human-centered design first, and one thing that I, you know, having done a lot of these now in combination, is I felt like the survey data was, you know, compacted what I'd heard from. It's just, when you just have this information, or you listen to voters give you one reason while on the phone or on an online survey, you miss a lot of that voter voice that you need. When you do, when you do a design and specifically ask for certain types of voters, it gives you that much more information.
Did all staff had an opportunity to do the staff thing online? Is that correct? All staff? Okay. But we don't know out of the 1,400, 40, if they even, if they lived in the district or not, or maybe that's not important.
Well, I, yes.
I mean, maybe it's not, I don't know, you know, I kind of wrestled with that when I read the thing, knowing they, if you're a part of it, directly, if you're directly going to be directly affected by it, whether you go vote on it or not, is important because you still have influence, but your influence can be positive or negative. I don't know, I kind of wrestled with that to know if it really was important or not important. I read through it, and I thought, well, it would have been nice to know if you actually lived in the district and voted for it. We have a lot of, I mean, I don't think people realize, we've got a lot of staff people who don't live in our district, but they still have, based on your one slide, they're going to be influential, and they have friends and other social things that people have. So, I don't know, maybe it's not even important. I, I don't know, I wrestled with that, to know if it was or wasn't.
We do a little analysis just on our zip codes, just to get a feel for our 3,500 permanent employees, right? Full-time employees. And I think Carol's got that data, around 35 to 40% we know are residents of the district.
Forty-two point five-five percent are definitely yes voters, ability to vote within SPS. Unknown, which means they have a post office box, is 28.45%. And then, we have a number of zip codes in our community where they're shared, and so shared is 29% of our population or 987 staff numbers. And this is representative of active staff and not temporary employees.
Could the voters or staff actually make comments? I know, of course, when you're doing your part, you get comments, but did the other two have an opportunity at the end to make comments, or not? Or was it just this?
Well, both surveys opened with, opened it in questions, opened it in questions for them to provide information.
Will those narrative comments be compiled, or is that, has that been exacted into sort of your?
As you asked me, yes.
Has that narrative data that you gathered, the open-ended, has that been compiled?
Those are those categories.
Oh, the category.
Yeah. Dr. Ellison takes light and puts them in categories.
And puts them in the categories. So, the comments were put in the categories. I just want to say, the report, the whole report is overwhelming, is not a good word, but it's pretty close to that. On, when you see the amount of data, it's just not what you've got. It's really, it's broken down even more and by, you know, it's just a lot of material to process and be able to. So, in saying that, I appreciate the fact that at least there were some guidelines at the beginning of, here's what you may want to look at, because after a while, I could get lost in all that stuff, and finally say, I don't even know what to do. So, at least, I think your things at the beginning on the takeaways at least helped me focus on some of, a lot of the data that was there, because otherwise, you just, do you focus on something that has 1.2%? I mean, really, it's, I know those are voters, and they may have voted yes or no based on 1.2, but I just think that at some point, I had to get to a little bigger picture to not get lost there.
I just would like to say thank you for your care and for the design approach to this, and for both qualitative and quantitative data, focus groups, and meeting with people, and surveying. And I would want to thank our 1,400 staff members who took time to complete a survey, which is sometimes annoying and takes time out of your day. So, it's very valuable to hear from our teachers and staff, and so to get that kind of a return on a survey is very impressive, and I'm thankful for the 400 voters who took time to talk to somebody on the phone and answered the phone call, first of all. So, there's, as Bruce mentioned, there is a lot to process here, but it's exactly what we ask of our superintendent, to bring back this information, so that we can make informed decisions, because ultimately, we are here to serve the people, and we will continue to do that. So, thank you for all the work that's gone into this.
Quick question on, it came up a couple of times with respect to cost, size of the issue. Do, from your data that you have, was that more of number of zeros at the end of the total bill, or was it individualized from a tax basis of, you know, you saw too much taxes, high taxes, then you saw size of the issue? Was that, from conclusion, do you think, is one of those that it seemed a little more obvious that it was just too big versus what the impact is to me as a taxpayer?
I think that honestly, it's going to be a combination of those two things. I think that honestly, it's going to be a combination of those two things. I mean, I, you know, probably worth, I'll have Dr. Elixon break down maybe the comments and see if he can give you more percentage on that. But, you know, when I did the human-centered design, it was interesting, yes?
If you go back to the first slide, you kind of, I think, tried to do that, because opposed to tax increases and taxes too high, 3.5 and then, too much money at one time is 10 percent. So that speaks to those two different issues. Their response was more likely to fall into the individual tax impact, but that other one was a driver too. I think he's tried to break those two issues out apart a little bit, so.
I mean, I know, right now, we're not at a point to sort of look ahead and what we're going to do. But I, you know, it's kind of a data, I think this is really rich data. It's like sort of, there's some things that were kind of eyebrow raisers for me. And I think one of the things is that we can stipulate that our levers to pull are, there are a lot of them listed, but some are easier to pull than others, it seems to me. I mean, there is a certain percentage of no new taxes, right? So you can sort of bracket that out. You can't control that to a certain degree. Then there is a percentage of always support, right? Although, you know, you talk about the always support, we're a little more torn this time, that is typically the case. And that, that's a real concern to me. But I think, you know, I think the board, though, has to own this. And there are certain tactical things that, you know, we can make choices about whether to have shared campuses or building stages as opposed to chunks or whatever. Those are tactical. I do think, I'm not saying those are easier to change, but those are decision points. The thing that jumps out at me that gives me pause is roughly a little more than a third of both staff as well as voters said, I don't trust or authenticity of voice. That's harder to change than tactical things. So I think as we think about this, I think there's some issues that we have to, have to come to grips with. And that's not something that we ought to run from, it seems to me, because we ultimately are looking to serve the public good. And we have to be able to listen to those voices that frankly, we prefer not to hear in some cases, right? Because good news is always easier to hear than the less good news. But I mean, ultimately, I find this heartening. I mean, we didn't do some things that we might have done differently, but now we learn and on we go.
And that's what we're going to do the next few months, is what do we do next?
Just a quick, the first slide, the key themes, and you picked out, you bolded those five for us?
Yes.
Third slide, maybe. So should I assume that those themes are in order or not?
Well, I would, you know, yes. I would, I would be comfortable with saying those are top five in order. I would just hesitate. I mean, all of those are important pieces, but.
Or would you put it in a circle? Okay.
It's a nonvisual.
That's right. I'm very.
Mark, what, when, when the survey revealed that three out of four preferred to renovate buildings, but two out of four were open to new buildings, what does that tell you as far as the beliefs of those that you hold?
I think, you know.
Why did they say what they said?
The renovation piece, I think, is kind of the default piece. It's like, if we can renovate a building, renovate it. We don't want to just tear down a building, tear down a building, okay? But at the same time, when you say, these facilities, these students deserve new facilities and, you know, they meet their needs, they're not, they're in favor of that as well. I know that, that sounds contradictory in a lot of ways, but I think that goes back to the heart of, this issue had a lot of complexity around it, right? They're trying to sort through those things. And when you can renovate a building, whatever that means in Springfield, right, they're, they're okay with that. But a case can be made. They also want quality facilities across the board for their students as well. So it's a tough one. I know it's tough to wrap around, but I believe that doesn't.
That's a big part of what we're asking people to own on.
Yeah. And I think that goes back to, I think there's a lot of goodwill and support of, you know, they want to be there for the students. What's the best path for them? And they are getting a lot of contradictory messages around.
So they weren't asked, would you prefer to renovate or rebuild? It was just?
Projecting.
A projecting, based on renovation, would you support or conclusion or support it? And then a new building, would you support it or oppose it? So it wasn't a matter of choice necessarily. I'm, I'm wrestling with that.
I mean, you can read some of it.
And trying to come up with that exact conclusion of that. So, okay. All right. Any other questions? Mark, thank you so much. Passing on to the other Mark for his help and support. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just going to.
Oh, you're dying. You died.
Yeah. Moving on to item 4.01, contracts, agreements, bids and change orders. Do you have a list of there? We'll, you know, cover them now, some of them? Or any questions?
I'm just here to tell you that there are 22 items provided for your review over the next two weeks. Be happy to answer any questions you may have. Otherwise, we'll be back.
Any questions? I did have one question on the AEDs.
Yes.
And I owe you, cancel them or go back out. My question wasn't so much of getting them, because I think that's tremendous. Training, who gets trained to use them?
Sure.
Is that cost built in there? Does the supplier train?
And actually, our health services staffs, our nurses are already trained on AEDs and there are other individuals throughout the district trained as well. And.
Just staff? Would we train students?
I would say adults would be the focus.
Okay. All right. So if you have any questions on other questions, send them to Carol between now and the next meeting. Okay, item 5.01, revisions to board policy, which is, scroll down, board policy FF. And I know we had first read last meeting to do that, and we do need to vote on that tonight. Any other questions or for Carol on the policy of naming facilities and buildings?
We're just voting on the highlighted yellow change.
That's the only.
That's the change.
So we're voting on the whole policy?
Okay, okay. That's the change. Okay.
Any questions for Carol on that one? Do I hear motion to approve policy FF?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Denise?
Tim.
Tim's second. Oh, nobody?
Aye.
And Tim. Tim, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye. It's aye. Aye.
Aye.
Or yeah. It's Canadian.
That's right. Okay, thank you. Moving on, item 6.01, local model compliance plan for special education. Phyllis?
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is our certification statement for our local compliance plan. We do this annually that requires board action. So we have once again chosen to adopt our requesting that we adopt the model compliance plan. We have options to rewrite the whole compliance plan or portions of it. I think, as I shared with you last year, that our local compliance plan trickles down from federal statute, the IDEA, the federal regulations that tell us how to implement the IDEA, that we have a state plan, which is our state law, and then we have state regulations. And from that, we adopt a local compliance plan, saying this is how we will implement the regulations of the IDEA as well as allocate finances for our federal money as well as local and state money to maintain fiscal effort. So we're asking that you approve that. And I know if you have any questions between now and I think we've set that on the agenda for two weeks. We'd be happy to entertain any questions or meet with you to, to share more of that. The model compliance plan gets posted on the website and we will make a printed copy if we need to for any of our parents or patrons that would like to see a copy of it.
Phyllis, I just have one question. So is there anything specific about this plan that you want us to review that might be different from places in the past or anything you knew, you knew, need for us to be aware of?
There is nothing new in the plan at all. We're functioning under the same federal regulations and state regulations that we have been since actually 2009 because the IDEA has not been reauthorized. It's kind of an interesting question, though, with regard to what's happening at the federal level. There has been, our president has asked that all federal laws and regulations be reviewed to minimize federal regulations, regulatory requirements at the state and the local level. So there is at the federal level right now, a request for information. And there are a lot of organizations, individuals that are submitting information, recommendations to deregulate some pieces of the law. So it'll be real interesting. Those are actually due September the 21st to the Office of Special Education Programs at the U.S. Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed. So it'll be interesting to see the fallout. I would tell you that most special educators across the nation, and I would be one of those, that wouldn't recommend the reauthorization of the IDEA at this point. I think we fear that our students and parents would not have the same procedural protections, those for our individuals with disabilities that they have right now. So there is a lot of fear around that.
Questions? If you have any questions, between now and the 19th. Okay, moving on, item 7.01, unfinished business. We have none. We've finished everything.
Good to know.
Good. Efficient. Okay, public comments to address non-agenda items. We do have three speakers tonight, and I would refer to the speakers that comments will be limited to three minutes and for each speaker, and they will be timed, and you'll see it up on the screen. It's inappropriate to address the board about individual students or individual staff members by name in open meeting. If you have concerns about individuals, these concerns should be addressed through the appropriate administrative supervisors, either in the school or in the district office. Okay, moving on, and I apologize if I missed it. Peter Garsalon? Was that close?
I have to argue.
Oh.
My question to you tonight would be, I'm trying to find out why prayer was taken out of school. I feel that prayer is very important in school. I spent three years of my life in prison, and then 10 years of my life in prison, and then 11 years of my life in prison. I don't have an education. I've got about a third grade education. I had to go while I was in prison and try to increase my education. We need prayer back in school. We need parents that are going to teach their children about God, because if they don't know who Jesus is, they're going to end up like I did. I don't want that to happen. I stand before you a miracle. You're looking at a miracle. I should be dead. Three times, I should be dead. I fell 40 feet out of a tree at nine years old and it damaged the left side of my face. I am blind in my left eye. I can barely see out of it. I lost my hearing. I've got what they call a four-second delay in my life because of what happened to me. A second time, I was 11 years old. I was out on the ice and I fell through the ice and I was in that freezing water for nearly over a half an hour. If it hadn't have been for my dog barking and going home and getting my parents and stuff, I would have drowned it on that pond. I would have drowned it. The third time was when I was 14. I was hit by a truck, a dump truck, going down the dirt road. I was walking my bike down the dirt road in this dump truck. The guy was drinking Budweiser beer and he struck me. And it put me in the hospital and I was out of it for nearly over a month. I'm telling you, we need prayer back in school. I was a drug addict. I was an alcoholic. I was caught up in pornography at a very, very young age, because my dad would watch stuff on TV that was inappropriate. And I got watching it. We need prayer back in school. We need it, seriously. I mean, it is so important. It really is. Because if parents don't teach their children about Christ, who's gonna? Who is gonna? God changed my life, and I know that he can change the life of these kids in this school. But we need prayer back in Springfield. We need it badly. I just hope and pray that everybody here is hearing what I'm saying, because it is so important. It really, truly is. I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Alan Kemper.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Springfield School Board. It's really a privilege to be able to share with you different quotes of different presidents. We all know that George Worsington, the founder of our nation, was a strong, avid Christian. Read his Bible. He prayed. You can read up and you can see that he was not ashamed of his faith. But I would like to talk, first of all, in two weeks, on the 17th of September, will be the 230th celebration of our Constitution. And I'd like to ask a question. Is that all right, appropriate, if I ask, how is the Constitution being treated in our public schools and what do you plan to do on the 17th? Because we have survived as a nation 230 years. And I would like to say, I will be glad to make these available to any teacher, any superintendent, anyone that wants to put these in the hands of students, because this is what we produce. I am Alan R. Kemper. My email is alanrkempere@Yahoo.com. My phone number is 414-7131. But as I hold up this Constitution, this booklet has more than the Constitution. It also has a Declaration of Independence and also a message from my heart. But what I'm holding here is the whole entire Constitution and the Independence, Declaration of Independence. So it will not take a long time to thoroughly digest the Constitution and to see the brevity of it, the genius of it, that our forefathers wanted us to be a nation of free people, governing ourselves on the morality of this book that I hold in my hand right here that Peter was talking about. And we, as Christians, we must learn to disagree agreeably. If we can't see things denominationally perfectly, let's agree on the basics. And only in Jesus is life. And only through our Savior can we have salvation and things to work out in our school systems, in our government, in every area of our lives. Let me read this quote about Andrew Jackson. I choose him because he was not known as one of the most illustrious of Christian men. But he said this, "That book, sir, is the rock upon which our republic rests." And then there was another time when he said, "Go to the scriptures. The joyful promises it contains will be a balsam to all your troubles." I want to note him because he was not known as an outstanding, wonderful, Christian president, but yet he did say that much. And Thomas Jefferson, who a lot of people say he was not even a deist, well, I differ on that, because he said many things, and I have a whole lot of quotes in this book. This is William Federer. Write him down. William Federer, F-E-D-E-R-E-R. He has the American Minute, and you can get his email every day. Thank you. God bless, and God bless our schools.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Bob Monday.
Well, it's good to be here with you all. And everything the two previous gentlemen said, I would like to say amen. Traveling in youth and prison evangelism for all doggone 40 years as a singing evangelist, but also as the owner of the Ozarks Jubilee on 9/11, we're going to have Why I Love America rally on Park Central Square. And a lot of our branch and entertainers are coming up. We need some positive things in amongst our schools. No politics is going to be allowed down there. We're going to be very positive about Why I Love America. 300 rallies need to take place. We need to all be praying about the Gulf in Texas. I've been blessed to do concerts down there over 40 times in the last 40 years there in Florida. This is real, folks. What they talked about. We need to get back to some basics in education. Reading, writing, and arithmetic. Lay down the computers. My grandchildren, one of them, I'm so proud of them, thankful, they can't read cursory writing. She can't. Do you get that? The Mayflower Compact, the Constitution, the Bill of Rights. This is disgusting. If you get back to the basics of education. We were number one in mathematics, science, and history when I went to Central High School. You remodeled that real nice. Turned out pretty good, I think. So we get back to the basics of education. Get away from secular humanism and situational ethics. And we go back to the basics that made America great and brought some great people up to the educational system instead of dumbing them down with Agenda 21. And some of the things that are there happening right now, then we can, the people will get behind you because they don't have the foundations that have been presented to you. That is some of the reasons why heroin, methamphetamines, if you don't have a foundation to stand upon, then there's not a lot to build on. Kids are dying. Do you get that? They're dying in this area. And they're also because of the methamphetamines and the heroin. Alan and I had the great privilege to sit with our mayor today because he's going to speak at this meeting on 9/11. Why I Love America. We've got to get back to the foundations that make this great republic, the United States of America. Thank you. You're doing good. Let's get gooder. I'm sorry that wasn't good English. Thank you.
Moving on to 9.01, strategic discussion. Dr. Dawson.
Good evening. Welcome to the Goal Two presentation. Tonight, I am honored to share the story of our strategies around extracurricular, early childhood, and profile of learner. We have five of them to do tonight. This goal is really about access, equitable access to programming with the intent to increase student achievement and personal growth. My goal is to walk through each one of them, show you the highlights, accomplishments of the 16, 17 year, and maybe even point out a few of our next steps for this academic year that we're in. I will do my best to tell these stories, but I would encourage you to ask questions along the way. And I have leaders here to help address them at the same time. So with that, we'll get started. The very first one is really about extracurricular and after-school programming. You've heard a lot about this with our middle school expansion. Just a couple of the strategy highlights over there. You would see students who are active in extracurricular and programming, they have a 95% attendance rate. That's really not, that's kind of an ongoing trend, not just here, but probably across the nation. It's not an outcome of our program. It's more of just a statement. I wanted to show you our participation in after-school according to middle school and high school. And then really a big piece of this is our strategic plan that came out of the five-year plan for middle school expansion. And we'll talk a little bit about that also. So some great highlights coming.
I'm sorry, the numbers and students participating in after-school program for high school and middle school, that's, those numbers are from last year?
Those are from last year. This is our 16, 17 end of the year report for Focus Area One Goal Two. That's correct. So major accomplishments that I would like to just train your eye on with accomplishments in extracurricular and after-school programming would be truly your investment, your $90,000 investment to create after-school engagement, student interest clubs for our middle school students. But also would say thank you for your support as we have also transitioned our middle school into the era of Misha. We did that with your support earlier in the spring. And with that, we were able to add cross-country that started just now. And we were adding archery that will come on a little bit later in the fall. We also were able to add high school coaches for archery. And we're able to disaggregate the data in lots of different ways. Not without a lot of clunkiness, but we can do it. And we're going to get a lot better at it. I would share with you, really excited, I was at the, there's probably a slide in here, at the cross-country meet this weekend over Bolivar. We have, there's 1,000 runners there. They were at high school, they had college, high school. And then at 10:40, they ran the middle schools. It was amazing to see almost 400 kids on that start line and all nine of our middle schools represented. And I was sharing it with Dr. Hackenworth and Dr. Dublin. We each had children there. And my son, just speaking for my son who gets up to the start line, he's hyperventilating before it even starts.
He would like it if you did not continue telling the story.
He was, and I was so excited for that because he had to learn how to manage an emotion that he had not experienced before with 400 runners. And I think that's really what a lot of those kids had to deal with. It was just a really exciting kickoff to extracurricular sports for Springfield Public Schools. Just kind of point your direction what we're doing this year in that area. We will be training our middle school after-school engagement liaisons. We have moved that out of athletics and moved that more over to equity and access with Marty Moore so that we could, because that's really the target audience that we're looking for is to close the gap with equity and access. We'll be creating an internal accountability system with that for participation and attendance. Now, Dr. Harrell has done a great work in that team and we're kind of refining it a little bit as it gets moving into equity and access. This year, we've already had requests, meeting with our athletic director, starting to build out the 18, 19 sport schedules around, and volleyball, and football, and basketball, and wrestling, so that they start to match the region. Because you'll recall, in 18, 19, we're going to start playing within the region. We've already had some people in our neighboring school districts saying, hey, we want to be part of that. So that's exciting for this next step. And then working with Amy St. John, we will be working to automate some of these reports with aggregating the data in a more streamlined method. So this is the five-year plan that you approved or you've got to see. We're right on track with implementation of Misha sports and making the announcements we will be studying this year. One of the things I think is really powerful out of here is that we still have our middle school advisory stakeholder team that we have put in place to help us get here. That didn't dissolve at the end of this. They're still engaged to help us look at feedback. How is this working at this point? Do we need to adjust this plan in any way? One of the things they'll have to talk about right away is bass fishing at the middle school level as a part to push out.
Something that I didn't see that before.
Something there? Question?
No, I said I didn't, when I was reading it, I didn't catch the bass fishing.
Yeah. So they'll be talking about, it is expanding an emerging sport at Misha and they'll be looking to see if that's something we have the capacity to do at this point, but that is kind of on track to announce. Other, I would just tell you, right now, Marty Marsh just sent us out an update on fall sports up to this point. And when you add cross-country in and you kind of look at it, we're up about 150 students engaged in the athletic side from a year ago to this point. So this stuff is starting to make an impact. And now when we get the engagement liaisons up and running and doing student interest clubs, I think you'll see that number continue to grow. This is our kind of overall number between our middle school and high school students who could be and/or in athletics and activities. So you could be in that count because you're in band or you could be in that count because you're in football or both. So just to kind of show you our number overall metric.
It could be a duplicate.
Is that non-duplicated account? Somebody's in two, are they?
That's a duplicate count. So band and football, we count as two.
Looking at this, how are we, how's the data starting to report out with engagement around free and reduced lunch? It's a metric we use quite often. You see our high school, the district level is that second line there. It's showing high school free and reduced lunch at 54%, full pay, 8% on reduced, and 38% on free. And then you talk about the engagement. So that's trending the wrong way at the high school level. We have more students engaged who are full pay lunch than we do who are actually in the district average. It's trending the wrong way that we want. We want it to go the other way. If you look at the middle school, you'll see almost more comparable from the district to participation. So we hope to continue to tell our coaches and be out recruiting all students to participate in extracurricular and activities. 1.2.6 is really about feedback and creating feedback loops in our system. One of the loops you've seen before is how many employees are engaged in their, how many we've sent out, and then how many of them are feeling satisfied with 83%. You've seen that from HR a number of times. Let me kind of paint the bigger picture. So successfully integrated Panorama data, that's our tool. We really have three big buckets that we do every year at this point. We just finished the first full cycle in 16, 17. We have a leadership survey where leaders are given feedback from their direct reports about anything about support, availability, problem solving. The second big bucket is employee engagement, which you've seen HR report on satisfied in their work environment. And then the third bucket, which we implemented this year, is really about culture and experience of students, families, and community. Now, we didn't have a gigantic family and community end size into that, but we are starting that full cycle this year. And that will give us feedback on how are students feeling engaged in this classroom? How are families feeling engaged with this school? So it's going to go a little bit deeper into the system, but we just completed the first cycle. Very excited about that. I would tell you, one of the things I'm really looking forward to in this next steps area, not only about building capacity of our leaders, building capacity with you as our board, we will be bringing you a feedback kind of standalone presentation a little bit later in the fall to help you understand those buckets, some of the questions that are being asked, and some of the data that's trending along with it. So we know that's definitely on our radar. The other one I've asked Amy St. John and her team to do is kind of a calendar of surveys because we get a little bit of survey fatigue in the district. I want to make sure we're being strategic about when we're asking in addition to when our assessment calendar is. So that we're going to look at the balance of that. And I know she's, her and her team are working on that now. And then lastly, this is probably the best part. This is the part that I think is the most important out of this is that we're going to start to take these individualized questions and do some item analysis and then direct them back to strategies within the strategic plan. So we always ask students about student school safety. Are you safe at school? Well, yes, I'm safe at school or I have a concern. We're going to be able to push that back over to Jim Farrell and his team and tie that right back into 1.1.1, which is around student safety. So item analysis and disaggregating it out to link it in to our strategies. And I'm really excited about that, kind of a qualitative loop that we're going to be able to provide for you in the future. This is just a sample of what that data might look like. This first one that would come in would really be about, that, for me, as the building principal, and I can see my building line all the way across and how my staff is ranking now. And then I could also see it from a peer line. So imagine underneath the first arrow on the left, there'd be a whole series of building names right there. Now I could start to look at that data from a peer-to-peer look. How's my, how's my school stacking with elementary? How's my school stacking with the system? How's my school stacking with just secondary schools? So really, I want you to see this is that this is just a sample, but Panorama's allowing us to sort and slice the data in ways we've never been able to in the past. And it's going to be much more efficient as we move forward in the system. And this is really owned in Amy's shop, so she does a great job. 2.7 is really about modern learning tools. You've seen, you've heard a lot about this with Ignite and what we're doing. But this is really the pivot year. I think 16, 17 has been a pivot year. We have put 13,000 Chromebooks in in the last academic year. We had 500 KJTs in the system. Now, let me play that out the last couple of weeks. Now we have over 20,000 devices in the system. We have over 1,500 KJTs in the system. So as modern tools start to ratchet up, you're starting to see a change in behavior about in the classroom. I think that's what I'm excited to, I see, I think you'll see modern tools kind of go here. And then if you see, it's also about educational resources. Educational resources will start to expand in how we report that out. You know how we do with Bright Bites? That's our internal kind of metric to see how we're doing and growing. And Ignite has published that and I'll show that to you in just a minute. And then online classes continue to grow as anytime, anywhere opportunity for our kids. These are the huge accomplishments. There were 28 schools deployed last year. As you know, we're fully deployed now. We have 13,000 Chromebooks last year. We're over 20,000. We have iPads in the system. We've moved, we've moved KJ hotspot. And now we're providing new levels of support through our specialists who are assigned to about five or six buildings at a time. Now we've also got another layer underneath them called Blended Learning Mentors. We have one to four to five in every building who are getting regular quarterly training. So you have this kind of nice layered support to make sure that devices are not only up and functioning, but being implemented in the classroom as a resource to personalize learning for kids. This next year, as you know, we're already in it, we'll deploy year three. We've already done that. We will be, I think I shared an email with you about a pilot for K2 one-to-one Chromebooks in about 12 classrooms. So we're excited to see how that and get the feedback from our teachers. You remember from the data that we presented at one point about around devices, K2 says, I don't have enough. And so this is kind of that, hey, let's take that feedback and see if we can implement a solution for them. We'll continue to train our Blended Learning Mentors and we have to continue to look at online expansion. And I think that's going to push a conversation at some point around policy and procedures around online and our behavior there. This is the Bright Bites. And if you remember, Bright Bites really measures in four specific areas. The classroom is the four Cs. Access is device and internet. Skills is that, I kind of think about it as foundational skills of file management and that kind of piece. And then you have environment, tech support, all of that piece, kind of rolling those metrics. As you recall, we've done this, Bright Bites with students, faculty, and community. And our aggregate score continues to climb. And if you'll notice the green dot at the end, it does show us in an advanced category, leading with among other districts around the country using the same data, that we're one of the leaders of implementation of not just a modern tool, but modern learning environments, which is personalizing the learning in our classrooms. This is just one piece of support. This was system-wide at the end of year two, but you've got to remember that one-third of the schools were not deployed at this point for this survey. And I think it's really just really important to see the level of support, thanks to you and your wisdom and the budget, to see 66% of our people agree or strongly agree with the support they receive. And they receive that through job-embedded specialists, our mentors, and the hundreds of teachers who come to Appie Hour once a quarter or so. And it's just absolutely amazing. And if you were at the Ignite kickoff and you saw them go from early morning, 7 o'clock, to early evening, just learning. And I think the key, what I see in these supports is it's teachers teaching teachers. And that is really empowering of the classroom teacher. I have a new project. I have a new skill I want to share with my colleagues. And they are doing this. And it's amazing to see the organic movement of the support. This is that online environment. You can see, just training your eye on 2017, you have a blue in summer, spring is green, and fall is in orange. And I think what I really want you to see is online in summer. So in 2016, you see about 1,000 students engaged online. Last summer, we had about 2,000 students. That would have been really the summer of 16, part of the first time of 2017 school year. That would have been really the summer of 16, part of the first time of 2017 school year. And we can already tell you that in 2017, 18 school year, we're probably doubling that again. I'm going to be close to 4,000 students online. So they are definitely speaking to us and telling us anytime, anywhere, the flexibility to engage in their own learning. I speak, my daughter is currently taking an online web design class. And, and she's doing it on 10 o'clock at night, three nights in a row, and then she shelves it for a little while. And then she comes back to it. She's got to get it done. It's been an awesome learning experience for her. But it's anytime, anywhere because she can't fit it into her schedule because of band and everything else that she's involved in. So she saw this as a great opportunity on the outside of the school.
Yep. Just in that example, is there a seated section that she could have taken if her schedule had collaborated?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. And she sometimes fights me and says, "Dad, I wish I would have taken it online," or seated, right? I needed that social interaction because this online stuff is really hard and detailed. So it's hard to take an online class. I was engaging with a young man the other day who said, "Online PE is one of the hardest things I've ever taken in my life." So he goes, "Those kids seated are out there playing group sports and I'm writing a paper." And he goes, "A little different environment." But I'm proud that our team has done, increased the rigor of those online classes. I think this is really the next phase of the story. So you've, you've heard us talk for the last few years about modern tools. If that's a Chromebook or KJTs or internet access. You've heard us talk a lot about numbers and just the mass volume of it. But what is it doing in the system now? I think you have to start asking that question. And this is just a screenshot of the integrated units. If you recall, a couple of years ago, we started adopting software that wasn't from a company, but it was more about units and the right resources at the right time for our teachers. And now we're starting to use subscriptions and online resources and we're putting that all together in an integrated unit. This is our first year to launch, fully launch integrated units in the system. And feedback has been really positive up to this point, but it is also a little bit different because we have moved away from traditional resources and moved into a more of a modern environment. These can be updated at any time. So if you've been around for a while, I mean, I had a fourth grade curriculum book, right? Someone gave me and it did not get changed throughout the year because it, once it landed August 1st on my desk, that was going to be the fourth grade curriculum. Here, we can actually add resources on the fly and enhance units based on feedback we're getting right away. So this is a real-time curriculum at the same moment, which is great. I also just pointed out some of these other apps and adaptive software. So you see Dreambox up in the top left. That is really that moment. We talk about it a lot. That's that formative moment where students are being personalized in their, in their learning. So we could all be sitting at the same table doing Dreambox and someone could be working on addition and subtraction. Someone could be working on algebra. Someone could be working on geometry and it's all personalized to what our learning goals are at that moment. So that's really taking modern tools and making it modern resources to personalize the learning. I love that they put in here the other day just about experiment labs simulations, right? So we don't have to always do it the old traditional way. We can give kids more options and you can give them maybe robust options. And then the other one I think is neat is the collaboration with discussion boards. We see that a lot at the college level, but now we see it embedding at K-12 where students are providing feedback to their colleagues, their co, you know, students in the classroom. "I really liked your project" and they're doing it on a discussion board. So different than what we used to do, which was pass the paper around, give them two comments and, right? This is, kids are so thoughtful in these discussion boards. I see it in my own family. So it's a great learning tool. 2.8 is really about early childhood. And I know you're all very passionate about early childhood in our community and creating quality experiences for four-year-olds and five-year-olds. Couple of quick highlights for you. We had 5,900 screenings and I'm going to show you a little bit of that in context in just a moment. We serve 853 students in early childhood. Remember, that's a combination of our early childhood special ed students and our wonder year students. And really for the last two years, those two teams have been working and collaborating in a, in a fashion that's better than it's ever been, sharing data and connecting kids in a better way. And then an increase in community events. Now, you know, Missy Riley and Phyllis and Amy, they have gone all crazy on this one, full blast. They have created their own dashboard and I gave you a little glimpse of it this last spring, what they were doing. They can just pull up data. Now that is probably the model dashboard that we have in all of our strategies right now. But the goal is to create, all of these strategies would have a dashboard that we could click and see the real live data. It's just a process, work in process. So I'm, I'm really proud of this team and what they've done. You can see the number of screens has increased from 5,200 to 5,900. The goal this last year was 6,500 and we fell a little bit short of the goal of 6,500, but we're still making right progress. And the long-term goal is 10,000 screenings by 2020. So we're still heading in that direction. You can see the increasing the number of events from 206 to 777. This is really great work where they've done with Ella. This is the Community Early Learning Leadership Academy. As you recall, we have a great need to provide quality educational experiences for four-year-olds. We don't always have the right amount of space or the trained staff. So we have challenged this team to say, "Why don't you go partner with our private providers? Link arms with them, share strategic planning, share curriculum, share staff evaluations and kindergarten readiness survey tools." So they have their first cohorts together of 10, maybe 11 private providers coming together regularly, quarterly for lunch and training. So that will be, that's a four-year commitment in that cohort and all 10 of them have said to go forward. We also expanded our kindergarten readiness surveys. You know, the mayor provides their survey. We've taken that a little bit farther and robust and created some social emotional metrics around it. We just completed our first baseline year this last academic year. Things I think you could look forward to in the, in the coming year. We have, well, I think another one up there is 800 early childhood students now have a Moses number. Now that was something we've been talking about for a long time at this table, I believe. It was very difficult to, and time-consuming to get it to that point. Very, just very time-consuming and tedious to get it there. We think our next iteration of this is going to be providing the right tools to our PATs and getting them, registering students in the home. Now, we've tried to do that a little bit. We haven't gone to a full scale, but we're going to start building that out in the current 17 and 18 year. We'll also identify cohort two and start disaggregating that data. We believe that disaggregating the kindergarten readiness data actually becomes the curriculum for the Ella group. And we see the kids are missing this, so now we're going to start training on that. So. This is that community events. Now, I asked the team, I said, "Okay, so great. So did that mean we just had one more kid every time we had an event? We just hosted a lot of events, but what was the outcome of that? How many kids? How many parents? What was the outcome of this?" And they, we talked a lot about that. We're just hosting events. We're creating more access, but we don't have a metric around it. The metric that I tied to it was more screenings. So maybe we're creating more access. We have a better relationship and we're actually then increasing the number of screenings of our students. So again, you can see we've, over the last four years, moving from 4,900 to 5,900 with a goal of 6,500 this last year, moving towards 10,000 by 2020. That's going to be a great celebration for our community. These are the 10 partners in the Ella cohort number one. So we're excited to have them. I know they've already met once. And they've already started to work on norms and their curriculum for what it's going to look like. Now, look, it's 2017 to 2021. So this is a four-year commitment that we're trying to keep this cohort together. And you think about a private provider having to leave their business to come in, collaborate and learn and grow together. They're committed to that if you're making a four-year moment. So very excited about this work and what Missy and her team are doing.
Michael, before you go to the next one. How often are you doing the kindergarten readiness study and?
We did a, that's a good question. I think it's a pre and a post, but I'm going to. Missy's here.
The one we're doing.
Kindergarten readiness study or?
Yeah, the one we're doing.
The one SBS is doing, not the other. That's why I'm asking.
Every time you do a developmental screening on a child, we use that kindergarten readiness tool. And so they should be screened once a year and so we can also use it as a pre and a post that way.
So that's, you're just accumulating data from the screening in the first place? So it's not a, you're not doing something separate?
No.
Okay. Great.
This one is 2.9. This is really about underrepresented, creating access to underrepresented and diverse students. You know, the champion of this is Marty Moore. And we'll be moving forward with Phyllis, also co-champion this next year as she takes on special programs around gifted and our title students, our ELL students. So we're going to start connecting some of this together. Marty provided that there was 303 recorded community engagement hours. We also are very proud of the fact that you all approved Equity and Access Champions. So we can have a leader very similar to the Blended Learning Mentors model. We have somebody in the building who can answer questions and be a champion for families. And then as we started digging into the data, we're really proud of our graduation rate for some of these subgroups.
Mike, can you stop for just a second? I just would like to get a little bit better idea. I don't know if there's anyone here that can explain this or you can just bring it back another time or something, whatever. But what would, what does an access, Equity and Access Champions day look like?
Okay.
I don't mean, I'm second to give them to say that, but what, what would their day look like as opposed to someone who is non-merural?
Sure. I think that's a good question. Now, it's brand new, so I don't know if I can say, hey, this is how it looks in every building right now. They're classroom teacher typically, so they're taking this on as an extra responsibility to be trained. So we see them coming in quarterly for a training with community partners. So maybe we're going to partner with Missouri State. Maybe we're going to partner with some of our local groups. And so there'll be some training that goes on there. Now, if there's a question back in the building about resources for a family or I've just had an ELL student show up or not an instructional site, what do I do? This person could help be a champion for that family, connecting dots with Jerry Borland's team and the English language learners. They might be somebody who helps counsel or work with a family who might be experiencing homelessness. So they could be that underrepresented folks. So I think they're going to be trained in a lot of different kind of moments and just be a resource to the building to link families. That also, if I'm a teacher and I've got this student that I'm not sure exactly what to do, I have another person, a colleague that I could go to that I know has been trained and has additional resources to link them up. So how their day is, I think it could look different.
Yeah. And I'm hoping these people, these are people that we can keep them year to year because it sounds like this is something that the longer you stay with it, the more you learn, the more access to resources you have. So I'm hoping this is a real positive experience for our staff.
Well, yeah, I think in our former model, we had two people in the Equity and Access Department serving 50 some buildings.
Right. So that's, it'll be interesting.
Now, we're going to have 60 people getting trained, expanding our footprint, learning, getting the training, getting the resources to help families and help students succeed. I mean, that's ultimately expanding our footprint of advocates.
And I don't know where this works in our board's schedule, but I think it'd be a nice thing at some point to hear from some folks after they've had a year's experience of how this is working. And I mean, it's not necessarily, it doesn't need to be a story time, but I just think it's, I think it's probably going to be something that's going to be much more helpful than we can imagine. So it'd be nice to hear from some.
I think as we start to program out the mid-year reports in January forward, I'll remember and try to bring one of these strategies forward. I don't bring every strategy forward in a mid-year report.
I'm sure there's too many.
And some of them are like begging to come up and ask, "Yeah, I want to get in front."
No.
So, but this is one I think we need to see how it's kind of evolving. Because I think what we have in mind, it may be different when it actually gets into practicalities. So this is a unique piece because I'm just going to flash real quickly, but you have programming accomplishments and then you have community accomplishments. And I think some of the programming accomplishments that you are very familiar with is Club Encore has been refreshed. Explore has been pushed out in a very robust way. I think one of the great programming things is courageous conversations. The programming that we all took place, it was beyond diversity. I think everybody in the board participated, many of you did, members of the executive leadership team did. And we continue to just keep the conversation alive and I think that's great. Some of the other programming is some adaptive software for English language learners. So there's a number of things in the way of programming that I think are creating, maybe shrinking that access gap. Community part, I think I shared with you an earlier email about SPS re-engagement of some of our dropouts. We've taken a whole new strategy around that, creating tiered systems of support for students. And we've done personalized phone calls. I think as of today, we have about 38 students who have re-engaged to back into the system in a unique path. Every one of them has a unique story and they all get a unique path. And what I'm really proud of, what we learned through Nikki's story, is that you can't just enroll them, but you have to have an Amelia. You have to have a mentor, right? Side by side. So all 38 of those students have been assigned a mentor from our SPS staff who have said, "I want to help." And so that's a new strategy I'm excited about for those kids.
And that's 38 students this academic year?
38 students probably in the last three weeks. And we have another community engagement on Thursday. We've kind of done some calling and we've created some community engagement opportunities. So we did one at McDonald's on the north side. We're doing one at the Midtown Library this week. And we have counselor, we have everybody there so that we can evaluate the transcript, tell them what they need, enroll them, give them their Chromebook and, you know, get them ready to go. So.
Generally, what time of day do you do that?
This is, this one is in the evening, but we've done lots of different times.
Different times. Good for you. That's great.
So we called McDonald's, I think on Carney and asked if we could reserve a few tables. So, and I think that came from a feedback loop that we did with faculty and principals saying, hey, maybe, they didn't want to be at school. They're not coming back to school. Maybe they'll come back to the year. So we kind of pivoted and took that feedback and changed our strategy. So. Just really excited about all the things that are happening in this world. I can't thank Marty Moore enough for how she engages with our community and keeps us attuned, but also values all those partnerships. She does a great job. One here that we're really excited about is not only how, the impact of Club Encore. As we bring that back to you this next year, see how the enrollment is going. We had a great response from faculty and this week, we are making thousands of personalized phone calls to families saying, "The 11th is our start date, but we'll take, we'd love to have you." So we've moved our strategy from a letter that said, "Your child is one to two grade levels behind, blah, blah, blah." Kind of a shaming letter. And we've moved to more of a personal phone call from our liaisons and our teachers, encouraging kids to come. So I've been to the liaison training. I've been to the teacher training and it's, there's a lot of positive feedback. Teacher saying, "Thank you for being so focused. Thank you for having it so organized." I can't thank Learning Support and Blended Learning for the work they've done to get the curriculum just right. So. Another piece of this I think you have to look forward to is this, again, it goes back to linking the panorama data to the strategy. So we have data in the system that we ask kids a lot, but now itemizing it out and putting it over, I think would be very powerful for moving this strategy. This was an outcome. So we kind of started looking at data and this is our four-year graduation rate from 16, class of 16, class of 17. You can see an increase of our Hispanic population. You can see an increase in our African-American graduation rate. See a significant increase in our English language learner graduation. Now, I would love to stand up here and tell you all those community programming and the community events are making this kind of an impact, but I can't tell you that's causal, right? Just like I can't tell you the truth, Tooth Truck is making attendance rates go up or down. But I can share that this is the kind of data we're looking at and hopefully we're making an impact with these partnerships and this community involvement. So very excited to share that. The last one I want to share with you is a little bit about Profile the Learner. And I think you have engaged with this in the spring with Dr. Dublin and Dr. Anderson. They brought you some students. They did a little station rotation. You got to engage with some students at all levels where they're starting to harness their learning, own their learning on their own kind of website to highlight major projects around collaboration. This is how do you start to prove evidence around those four Cs of creativity and collaboration and critical thinking? How do you get that in one spot? Because it's not really a high-stakes testing moment. It's a body of evidence. And so you got to see that a little bit. We have 70% of our sites, 47 elementary school teachers, secondary teachers engaged. Now, most of them are blended learning mentors who really like the tech that goes behind it. So we've kind of gone to that direction. It's kind of a soft opening here. We'll engage in a soft opening again this year to see if we can pick up more teachers through word of mouth. But then we'll be starting to scale out some metrics in the future. Just to share with you a few of these where they have been. I think there's some good stuff here in the fact that we have, did land on Google Sites is kind of our platform. We have experimented with a few different pieces within Google Sites to. We have experimented with a few different pieces within Google Sites to make it easier for students. We love that platform because kids can take it with them. So if they would move out of our system or want to carry this on after college, then it's transferable, and I think that's a really important piece. We also completed this last year with, partnered with Ed21, which is kind of a progressive think tank of schools around the country, and went into a pilot project with them at Hickory Hills, and that was successful. I don't know if we learned where, I think we might be a little bit farther ahead than they are in some of this. Our next steps really here are to link this work with Portrait of a Graduate, so we're kind of in that process at the same time. We know we can go around the four Cs. The four Cs are embedded into our strategic plan. I've told the team, "I feel confident, keep moving forward," but it will shift again once we get the Portrait of a Graduate skills up and running, so. This is an emerging strategy, and we'll continue to monitor it along the way. And then I, these are the, these are the three students you engaged with this last spring and got to see their actual sites. And then the last two slides are really just summary slides for you to kind of recap what we've been. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them along the way, or I have leaders here you can also engage.
Questions for Mike?
What's the future of the Blended Learning Mentor?
That's a great question. I think there has to be a discussion around professional learning in general, because it may not be so isolated in the future, right? So I think there's going to be some sort of a mixing and matching, but I know, I'm kind of like, "Hey, this is really powerful," but if you're year-one school, "Okay, I got it," right? But if you just got deployed yesterday, that Blending Learning Mentor is like gold in your building right now, so there's still a play there for a little bit longer out. But I think there's a really important conversation around professional learning that has to take place at some point where you start mixing and matching some of that altogether.
Yeah, it just kind of makes me think about, how do we staff our buildings five years from now?
Yep.
I think it looks different from now.
I absolutely agree.
Particularly as we've got all this deployment. It's no longer deployment, it's just, we're doing it.
Yeah, it's, it's got to really move towards modern resources, right? I mean, well, the, the impact of footprint around, metrics around how many, around the system will become so less. It'll just be what we do. They're talking about now, what are we, are we just going to let them stay there and then, like a book, check them in and then check them back out, so we don't have to have this big deployment schedule in the future and take all hands on deck? I think we could be more efficient in that. It's got to be more around the resources and how we're using them, and then I think that's going to morph the support in the future. But I don't think it's right now, even though I'm probably there because I've been living it for the last three years, but your, these, your three schools are just got deployed. They're, they need that person right here, right now, so.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
I think it's a little bit longer play, that conversation comes back.
And then I think that the other, the other piece that I was intrigued by was this notion that now that curriculum is online, and it's not in some sort of static object, that, yeah, you can adapt, but if you want, but if you don't, then what? And the burden on teachers, the opportunities for teachers are great, but the burdens in some ways are even more great.
Yeah.
And that, so I suppose that's when professional development becomes.
You have, we have to look at, so here's my observation for this summer, right? We did New Teacher, we did New Leader, we did SPS Now, we did Summer Academy, we did Ignite Training, we did Activate SPS. Right. We did all that, all very important work, but maybe there's a model moving forward that brings that all together, and it's Activate SPS in a different light. So I think we have some people thinking about that, but we, I think we're two or three years ahead of where that's at. I'll let you know, we'll be back in October for the Goal 3 update. We just have two strategies in that particular one. And we also had October scheduled for the first Student Success Report, which was where we bring all the data metrics to you, because we know all of this is important. You can't identify one particular strategy for the impact of that student achievement. That may be delayed with the state's most recent announcement of end-of-course exams. We are waiting for them to finalize everything. We had it slated for October 3rd, it may be the 19th. We're kind of at their mercy right now until that stuff is unembargoed and we have access to it, so we'll keep you posted, but we know that's in the sequences to, okay, here's all about student achievement, the strategies, now how are we doing in student achievement? Because that's, that's the end game, but we're, we're, it might be delayed there, we'll let you know. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, bye.
Too many things to come.
Okay.
We'd be here till midnight, but I, so I don't know.
I don't have that kind of time.
I don't either.
Okay.
Everybody's doing okay, aren't they?
Yeah.
We don't have much left, but it's.
No, we're good.
Okay, so we'll make sure. Superintendent's update.
Dr. Dawson really hit on a couple of things. You received the update on the EOC issue at the state level, so APRs are kind of on a hold. End-of-course, annual performance reports.
That was nice of you.
Sorry, I had to stop and go back acronym.
I was okay on the second one, but the first one was troubling.
End-of-course exams, two of the ones at the high school level, there's been issues with comparability. They say student individual scores are worthy of still use and have valued feedback. However, using them as part of any comparability district to district and statewide, they are eliminating, eliminating them from that, which means the APR will be completely messed up, basically. They're working on what that scoring will look like. There's been lots of other questions, because the Algebra I actually impacts eighth-grade scores, because most of, a lot of our eighth graders take Algebra I, so they don't just take the math. So it's not just going to affect high school APR scores, it could potentially affect the APR down at the middle school level for math numbers. So lots of questions that the practitioners in the field are asking back to the department to clarify. They are seeking to find their answers. This isn't something that they created, right? We're not blaming them for this, but it's an unfortunate turn of events, and it creates where we are today. And I would say it's a good time for us to reinforce the conversation of overemphasis on standardized testing as part of our APRs, because when they make up somewhere between 60 and 90% of the scores, the four-year APRs, whether it's a building or a district level, there's a lot of weight on it, and then we are at, kind of at their mercy when there's a goof up potentially, and we don't know all the answers. We'll keep you apprised and bring you updates as we do. The good news is, we will have our internal metrics, right? That's why we use those other things to be more dependable, more reliable for us, and we have multiple assessments that we use for that. So we'll bring you more information as we know it. Awesome info, if you hadn't learned, that Daniel is in the top six for State Teacher of the Year, so it's great to have SPS represented as a finalist for the state. Won the regional award with three others and advanced to that finalist, so he's went through his interview process with unfortunate, we're proud of him, no matter what happens. That's great work.
He's representing us now.
Well, I know you're the one talking, but every time I get a chance to hear him speak, he's just, he's so inspiring. It's, it's really great. That's one of the benefits of being us, is we get to spend time with him.
Yes.
He represents our 1,800 great educators.
That's right.
Oh, geez, yeah.
So it's awesome. Enrollment for Club Encore is underway. Dr. Dawson hit that cross-country update. Well, he did mention of those 400 middle school learners, I think 200 of them were ours, so that's really cool. Our middle schools represented in such a bold way as we started this, so we'll bring you updates as we know it, sort of follow metrics and those things.
Did you measure how many of them hyperventilated?
I don't know that we took that data. We'll have to put that on the notes for the coaches.
They were excited, though.
They were, yeah.
I think we should not speak of that again.
They were extremely excited.
Cool opportunity to expand access for our dates. In fact, we'll be large, we believe. Legislative update, I really don't have any additional veto session. Can't remember when it starts. It starts this week, or maybe next week, they're getting ready to go into veto session. We don't have any knowledge of anything that would impact us at this point, so it's all of our work, but that's always a question mark. We'll leave it at that, but all of our work should be around preparing for the upcoming session at this point, so. That's it. Legislative board.
Okay. Board comments? Okay. Upcoming meetings.
Going to have some?
Got some.
We have some.
Need to have some, I guess.
Let's go to the house, people, come on.
We've got the regular ones, we've got MSBA coming up. Very soon.
Open houses are coming up. You can go to something every night if you want.
Yes, you can.
I guess the one thing that I would ask based on that is, does everyone remember their assigned buildings? Do we want to keep the same group for next year, so we can go ahead and get that out and publish it? You have an assigned group of buildings, and we didn't have any turnover in the board, so we can keep it, or we can mix them and resend it.
Send it out again. I don't care if you mix it, I just send it out. I don't have to do three million years to figure out who it is.
Do you want to keep what you have? Do you want a mixing of those?
I don't care.
Access? Just give us your feedback, and we can.
Just send us a new date.
Denise goes to all of them.
Or we can let Kathy decide, and she'll build whatever, so.
Okay.
We just want to make sure that, the goal of that is making sure that everybody gets some opportunity and visit, because if we all hit the same ones, then we don't get that opportunity for everybody to have some visits. Kathy, we'll update and send that out next week ourselves, and as always, if you want